All right. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. And we are, this is the Board of Trustees meeting for Wayne Township. So, welcome everybody, sign in if you haven't already. And can I roll call, please?
Call roll, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Ms. Coleman.
Here.
And Mr. Patrick.
Here.
All present in the county.
All right, let's say the pledge of allegiance, please. Can you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the February 21st?
So moved.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. All those favor of the president, aye?
Aye.
Then Darrell sent out a revised version of February 7th. You weren't there, so you can't, so do you read the revised meeting?
Yes, I'm already reading.
Here, so you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
To reapprove this?
The February 7th meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
So, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, is there any changes to the newly posted agenda where we have five resolutions on it? You guys know it?
That's my knowledge, yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
All right. All right, so tonight, we're going to have at 7:30, depending on how far along we are in the meeting, we will be breaking and doing a, doing a site plan review and a zoning change at that time. So, we'll just see how far we get in the meeting. All right, do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Everybody? All right. So, road supervisor, Mr. Camry, you're up first.
Good evening, board. The only, I have three or four epidacty updates. Just as far as going along with the third item, you know, cleaning pipe after the storm, we've been cleaning up, we've had, removing creek rock from where it's been washed down towards bridges and pipes, so we've been working on that today. Obviously, with the storm Friday night, I closed the avenue Friday night and I didn't get it back open until Monday morning. So, I think the highest I saw it was Leveney at Spring Valley, where I was saying it'd be broken. So, it usually comes out down here about, somewhere around 10, 10 foot four, 10 foot three, somewhere in that magnitude. So, I always keep, I've got an app on my phone that I keep an eye on it.
That's nice. You don't have to keep running out and checking.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's usually early in the season like this, it's always kind of a crap shoot because I don't know how much debris is actually in all the riverbeds and creek beds that are feeding the river that could dam up or back, you know, because a lot of times, you know, where it backed up and flooded quicker one year, you know, when it got flushed, you know, the next year it might be completely different. So, it's always a learning curve every year.
So, is that like the one down by our house on the south side? They were able to, that kind of cleared itself up with flooding down when you go down Corwin Road?
The Elvin?
Yeah, it's south of that, you know where it all flooded up down there? Yeah, right by Elvin.
We, well, down below that, that's county.
Okay.
That, Corwin, that direction from the Nixon Bridge, from Middletown Road, Nixon Bridge south is the county, is the county road, Corwin. Now, Elvin, the creek that comes down parallel with Elvin to Corwin where that bridge is, now it built up ahead of that and we cleared that out.
Okay, it's good because it seemed to go pretty good.
We dug, yeah, it started to build up there at the inlet of that bridge and we, so we went down there with the HOV today.
Oh, okay.
And cleared all that out, so it doesn't keep building up because trying to get it from under that bridge is.
And you got my email, this late, you got my email today on Cincinnati Columbus Road, John Manhattan?
I did get that. That spring feeds Ally Carter's place, Bob Horr's place, and the old beauty shop. That's the water supply for that.
Okay.
That pipe that comes there is the overflow from the cistern or the holding tank from that. Now, I did talk to Ally, you know, week and a half, two weeks ago, and he said that he thinks that pipe was broken.
It's broken or flooded.
Broken or flooded, right. And, but as far as any, in reference to the, to your email, it's private. I mean, there is no public authority there. I mean, so that's all private, I mean, I, there's nothing that, that we can do.
That's fine.
But I do think Ally and his daughter, who owns that place now, I think they are planning their, I mean, it's just wait until later on this year.
Okay.
Or better weather, let me put it that way. In reference to number seven on my report, I'm waiting on an additional quote. I've made contact, I just haven't gotten it yet. I've gotten one and it came in about where I thought it was going to. So, I want to get a second one to see in comparison. And then Thursday morning, day after tomorrow, I have a meeting with the micros. So, we're going to drive the roads and I'm going to get beat up on you for the better price.
Okay. Good luck.
So, yeah. So, other than that, that is, that is all I have. I'm up to date, unless you guys have anything you need to pass on to me.
Thank you for your work.
All right, thank you, and you're welcome.
All right, Chief Shear, Fire Department report.
Hello. I wasn't here in time to send out my report, so I did send it out to you later. Just a couple of things hit on was the Safer Gran, I did finish that this afternoon. And that was 1.7 billion, 1.79 million for three years for six personnel. Now it's in their hands up to the 17th to see where we score. We did get our pharmacy license renewed, so we're good for that for another year. Nothing on the engine that I've heard, the squad, I think, in Massey's hands. My surgery is on Friday, I don't know how long I'll be down for that. A couple of things I did, what's on the report was our ladder testing was completed last week also. So, our ladders tested, all our SCBA or AirPACs tested for the year, they're all good. And the ESO is finally starting to throw some data on the report module, so hopefully they get a lot better reports than what they got because they said it's really not accurate too much right now, so.
Oh, well, that's not good.
No.
No.
But we've only been since December trying to get it, so, but I'm sure we're not the only agency to use the ESO, so.
All right.
That's really all I got.
All right. Any questions, Amy?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Chief, good luck.
Yes.
For your sponsor review, all the vibes, all those things on Friday.
Hopefully it's only about a couple hours and I'll be out there heading home and be able to do stuff.
They're, they're good when you do, no need to.
Definitely.
I'm looking forward to not being able to do anything.
No.
But you've been hurting for a while, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lowing, zoning department report.
Hello. Hello. This is Stacy. There's a list of my permits for the month and then just some of the upcoming things that, there's a lot going on. So, March 21st at your next meeting, we'll be having a public hearing for Bentley's Possum Resort, which is a large kennel on State Route 73. And I'll be discussing with you and some information about, kind of, that's a, kind of a, the different circumstance, that, that particular application. Because it is a kennel, it is exempt technically under state law, could be built without any site plan, but they wanted a site plan for the purposes of being able to get building inspections and get their building to code, and those are things that the county won't do if it's exempt. So, they've added in some, like, things that make it a little bit of commercial on it so that we can go through the site plan process with it. But it is odd because it technically is exempt from local law, it would be permitted to be built. You'll be having your hearing for the administrative zoning amendments. I've got an upcoming BZA hearing, upcoming zoning commission meeting. The magazine is in, kind of in final drafts right now. All the content is to her and the goal is Friday. I've been part of the Warren County Assessment Fair Housing, is invited to that as a member in the local government. That was their first step, they're going to be going through a six-month process of writing a fair housing analysis prior to their submission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. I'm also working with the Chamber of Commerce on an upcoming business exhibit, I sent you the flyer, that we're hoping to kick it off this year with and make it an annual event. And it's come a long way, just about participants so far, so.
That's all. I have a question about the recycle rally. I was at the Warren County Health Board meeting just now, and they said that the tires are going, that they are going down to the township garage.
Yeah, like they did last time.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
They start at the school, we start everybody at the school so we can not publish the address.
They have that published in their flyer for the.
The ending?
I have them to do it, and it's probably.
The one they passed out tonight. So.
Have the address listed?
Yeah, because I worked through the whole thing with them and had them take it off, and they sent me a new one.
I'm pretty sure, you know, I should have brought that, I'll check tonight when I got, because I cleaned out everything that I was.
You know, getting tires out of ravines, out of behind, you know, behind people's barns, around their houses, it's the right thing to do. So, whether they come from, from here, from Massey Township, from Leaveney or wherever, as long, I mean, as long as it's one county. Because that's where we're getting the grant money from.
You're around us.
And, and, well, and that is what it is, but.
I think you said free hot dogs, too, on there.
They lie. I mean, unless, unless the county is getting.
Yeah, it says, here, here it is right here, because I had it in the email. Where? Wayne Township Road Department, 5238 North Waynesville Road.
Man, well, it is what it is.
Okay.
But it, I mean, it worked out well, we'll start them out at the school, and if they have tires, we'll send them down to the road garage, and then we pile them up down there. And then, which is, this is on a Saturday, so rumpy comes on Monday. And by Monday afternoon, closed business, they're gone. So, and like I said, you know, it's, it's a good thing, you know, cleaning up the tires, I mean.
Keep your tire changer going.
Yeah, no kidding. I mean, it never fails, every year after the, after the recycle rally, that Monday or Tuesday, I'll find six along the road. So, I, you know, my pile, my perpetual pile that I pick up, that I have down at the shop that, from where I pick up alongside the road, is always there. So, I try and get rid of them every recycle rally, but they, in the course of two years, it, they, they pile. But getting them all, getting them out of people's backyards and barns and garages and ravines is the sole purpose for it anyways, and we're getting grant for it, it's not costing us anything, so.
Okay.
So be it.
Yeah.
Thanks for the very details and.
Yeah, I know you've been busy, so, thanks.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Trying to keep it all together. All right, are we doing the administrative reports, since Gus is not here, like?
I was just trying to see if there was anything like, maybe today that. I guess the major thing was that one resolution today, the last one.
Met account.
So, the reason for that authorizing both him and Diane is that he's going to be going on vacation, so if it were to happen while he's on vacation, then you could do it.
Okay.
There's a reason for that.
Okay.
Pretty good?
All right. Thank you, so our old business, our convention of state's project, they don't, we're ready to vote on anything on that. We have a resolution, so we'll bypass that. Website status update?
Still working on it.
Okay. Old business, I think we need to, I'll remind Gus or something for next time. We still need to do some cybersecurity type work session, but obviously we want to do it on a tightrope where we don't have all this other stuff going on.
Did you guys by chance sign up, Tanner and Dave, out for something at your conference? Did they get emails about cybersecurity stuff?
No.
Okay, I told Dave it's probably just.
He's in cybersecurity in there for.
Yeah, well, this week, he's officially, he's in retirement.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, so he don't go anywhere.
Who are they getting it from? That company that we?
I don't know, he just asked me about the day he can give to myself, I don't know.
They buy some of those, like.
They probably just. Yeah. Just, yeah.
So, he's on terminal leave now?
He's on retirement, yeah. October 27th this month, he has no conversation with the number yet.
Wow, I love it, I'm praying for it.
He's excited, but he's not excited.
I bet. Do I have any questions or concerns in the bills?
I have none.
I do not.
Not, okay. All right, let's get into legislation then. All right, we have, this is 2023-14, which was, we decided to table last time because there was, we had a addition added to this Med Account Management Services about, basically this cybersecurity type thing where they will pay for, pay for anybody that, where if any data gets lost from all of our customers, if it's stolen, that it will help pay for services to people to manage their credit reports. So, I think that's a good thing. So, this resolution entering into a client service agreement with Med Account Management Inc. for EMS billing purposes. And I think it was a slight increase, let me see what it was. Okay, 7.75 to 7.825?
Yes.
All right. Anybody have any questions about this resolution?
No discussion.
No. All right.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-14?
I will second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Patrick, second by Mr. Jacobs, adopt resolution 2023-14. Call roll, they're on. Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
And Mr. Patrick?
Aye.
This resolution survived adoption this 7th day of March 2023.
Okay. I don't know why we don't have a 15, I'm not sure what the deal is.
We need that last minute.
What is that? Okay, okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, so, resolution 2023-16. This is a resolution authorizing annual, annual contribution to the Greater Warren County Drug Task Force for the year 2023. And the requested amount is.
I have to, well, you have the old version on the screen.
Yes.
Five thousand two hundred, excuse, $5,523.
Okay, thank you. And that was based on census numbers, and that's why it has changed.
It's a number of $1 per resident.
So, I think the idea is to get this passed if, if we want to pass that amount, and so we can present a check because Sergeant Aerosmith is going to be here next time, so.
Great.
All right.
Yep.
Any discussion on 5523?
I have none.
No, I'm good.
All right, I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2023-16 and the bound at 5523.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Coleman, second by Mr. Patrick, adopt resolution 2023-16 with the contribution being $5,523. Call roll, they're on. Mr. Patrick?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This resolution survived adoption this 7th day of March 2023.
All right, we're going to skip 17 and 18 for now because we'll do that after the 7:30 portion of our meeting. So, we have resolution 2023-19 approving and authorizing the Wayne Township Administrator or the President or the Board of Trustees to sign a new electric aggregation contract bid received through trouble link, trouble LLC, sorry. So, this is our energy aggregation, and they are our consultant that we hired to do this. And in the event that Mr. Edwards is not here and he's on vacation, then I can sign, sign into that agreement. This is for fixing, lacking a new fixed rate contract.
For electric.
Yep, for electric only, it looks like, yep.
I was supposed to say that they think the rates have been hovering around 6, 6.6 to 7 kilo per kilo.
Okay.
Where they think it'll land.
All right. All right.
I will make a motion to approve resolution 2023-19.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Jacobs, second by Ms. Coleman, adopt resolution 2023-19. Call roll, they're on. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Mr. Patrick?
Aye.
This resolution survived adoption this 7th day of March 2023.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
I only have one of these correspondence, it's from BP Business. So, we are, we're going to start charging the fleet a $12 per month. Maybe a two account, but I'm going to contact them so we just go to the regular account because I don't see any advantage on the fleet account, you Paul?
No, the only thing we're buying is gas.
That's what I mean.
I mean, that's so minimal, I mean, all diesel in that car, I don't know.
Bills not very much each month.
And gas is all on bond.
Right.
And you're about one pickup truck.
One, yeah, one truck and then one, you know, for solves and.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get it, just go to regular, regular part. I don't think we need to pay an additional $12 for what the, they send us a whole pad of records, but nothing that's used.
As far as I'm concerned, if you want to go away with that account, we can use our leases, I mean, if that's easier.
Let me see what these tell me, let me see what they tell me, then if not, we will go, we have to pay $12.
Absolutely, that's the same money, I don't know what the difference is, if it's ea, well, it might be easier with the tax refund.
Yeah, I didn't think that.
Yeah, it'd be easier with the tax.
Now, maybe it's worth it. I'd look back, see if tax refund, even worth the difference, though, because it's not usually very much. I'll look back at past.
I don't look at gross taxes, like $0.80 for diesel or $0.20 for gas and $0.70 for diesel. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Do we have any elected officials' comments?
I was just going to say, basically, my elected comments today was that, so, our end of our season basketball is now finished up, so now it's my turn to lead the board for them. So, basically, I just wanted to say thank you for that opportunity for the Youth Basketball Association for the five years I put in there, and then thank you for all the board members that are there and stuff, and I will be there for you guys in the future, if you guys need anything, move forward, so, thank you.
I, I just wanted to ask for a moment of silence for the family of Wayne as well.
Thank you.
A fifth grade student who passed away tragically on Friday. He actually was in my daughter's class, and so it's, it's one of those things, a lot of these kids, this is their first brush with, with this sort of thing, and, you know, it's, it's, we, we've always come together as a community, create these types of things, and so, just a few minutes of silence, a few minutes of silence.
Thank you.
I have a minute more.
Thanks, Josh. I have nothing else, okay, no work session today, no executive session. So, we're going to not adjourn the meeting because, so we're going to close this section of the meeting and we're going to wait till 7:30 until we can start the, start the next section.
Wayne Township, so. Start a special shop over there, just, it's still.
All right, hello, everybody. So, Wayne Township Board Trustees shall now come to order at 7:30 PM for a public hearing that was scheduled for 7:30 PM on March 7th, 2023, for a rezoning application. This is for Ryan Phillips at 4138 East State Route 73 to change from B1 and R1 to a B3. So, Stacy Lowing, our zoning inspector, has a PowerPoint presentation to share with us to explain what the application is and the reason for this hearing.
So, this is the third of three steps for a map amendment. So, the Warren County Regional Planning Commission heard this on February 23rd. Now, explaining their recommend, recommendation was to deny the township, the zoning commission held a public hearing on March 2nd, and their recommendation was to approve. And then you, you will make a final decision on, on this application. So, the Warren County Regional Planning Commission, their, their idea was that this is a use that is allowed in different ways of being approved, in a B2 and in a B3. And since in a B2, you could get approval through a conditional use process, they felt that since B2 is a little less intense than B3, that that was the route that they would recommend. Really, though, in our zoning code, B2 and B3 are very similar. A lot of cases are exactly the same, the category, if you look through our table of uses. And occasionally, one of them will be a conditional use and one will be a, a regular site plan that comes through the trustees. There are a few things that are more of a worst-case scenario, but we feel, I mean, I felt, the zoning commission feels that those are not likely because the size of the lot is so small, it's like two and a half acres, there's no sewer. So, you know, how likely is it that we would get a truck stop, for instance? So, otherwise, so, the difference between the conditional use in a B2 and a permitted use or a site plan in the B3 is that if you're the approving board and you agree like to rezon, then the site plan is before you for approval. If it's a B2, you would make a decision as a board for it to be a B2, let's say, and then that would be thrown over to the, to the BZA to make a determination on the use. So, there's, there's that issue. All right, so, this is 4138 East State Route 73, the parcel ID is 0507151017, and the total area for rezoning is 2.56 acres. Currently, 2.27 acres of zone B1. It has been zoned B1 since about 1988. The applicant's requesting that that area, along with an additional .29 acres of property that's currently R1, would be rezoned to B3. The remainder of the property will remain R1, so this total lot size is five acres, but about half of it would be B3, if we zone. This is just some footings. So, the current zoning, you can see here, there's B3 across the street, the, the medium color there, pink is B2. So, we have a stretch of B1, B2, and B3 in the area. Just a beautiful aerial view of the property, so the whole back of it would, is going to remain R1. This just shows the current and the proposed, so we see that extension to the rear of the property of about 75 feet, the length of the, that would be included in the rezoning. And these were the recommendations. So, the Wayne Township Zoning Commission did have the man who spoke to approve the rezoning, excuse me, to B3. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions? Questions?
No, this time. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, so, everyone has the right to eat, to speak in either support or opposition and ask questions. However, to ensure an orderly hearing, we ask that before speaking, you state your name and address for the record, and the timeline for each speaker is set to five minutes. So, first, we will hear from the applicant, then the proponents, then the opponents. The applicants will be given an opportunity to address any concerns raised by, after they have spoken. So, would the applicant like to come in?
Just one call.
Okay.
Just for the public that you're running this as two separate, this is just the rezoning.
This is just the rezoning and not the site plan, right?
Yes.
So, all right.
My name is Ryan Phillips, I, I live at 490 East State Route 73, we're just right next door to the 4138. And we were just going for the B3 zoning because of the people that I want, that want rent the property. Like she stated, the R2 had conditions with it, to where R3, they wouldn't have any problem with doing any of that. So, basically, all they're doing is just moving on to the property, they're not adding anything, they're taking away anything. The buildings are there, everything's there, they're just moving in. So, I've been there for 40-some years, I take well care of the property, as you can see. I am very picky about what I have. I am very picky about what I have put on there. So, but this fits what I envisioned being there. This is probably going to be, hopefully, the last deal I make. This is the long-term arrangement with Mr. Perkey. So if you want, he can come up and tell you exactly what he wants to do there and you can hear it from him. But that's probably all I've got, so. Yeah, do you have any questions for me?
Just a slight one about the additional, like, the reason for the additional.
I just did that just, just because there's like, we're thinking about down the road planting some trees back there. There's like an old fence there, there's an old dilapidated barn there. And I'm just going from the Mallory's property, which is B two. I'm taking it that X D seventy-five feet. It doesn't look like seventy-five feet, but I guess that's what it is. I love it all the time. It doesn't seem like it, but it's just like, there's just an old fence there. It's just old wood line. There's an old ripening shed in there. And that's why I just took it to the edge of that and then cut it across. And that was the only reason why.
Okay.
And down the road, actually, it's probably going to happen. I'm probably going to do it. I'm going to have it resurveyed, the back half of that, which I'm keeping residential. I'd like to put that on my property because I don't ever want that to change. So more than likely soon that I will do that. I'm just going to take that back piece and just put it over on my property and just be the end of it all, so.
Okay.
But yeah, so.
Sorry.
Did you have any more questions?
Any more questions?
That is pretty straightforward. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problems.
Thank you.
Would you like to hear from Mr. Perkey?
Yeah, he can, yeah.
My name is Derek Perkey. I'm the president and owner of Perkey Landscaping Company. I live at fourteen hundred Jeffrey Road. I guess you guys have like a plan of like listed activities and stuff we were going to do on the property. So I can kind of go over that if you want me to. Basically, what it is, we do our day-to-day operations out of a farm I live over on Jeffrey Road.
Yeah.
We've done that for twenty-nine years. We don't plan on moving that or changing that. So all of our day-to-day operations will be right over there. Basically, our goal for this facility is to make it an office for four or five of our staff people. And this is going to be a design center. So we do hardscape patio, taming all, stuff like that, water features. So this is going to be an area for us to display some of our product. So clients can come in, look at it, purchase it, do the paperwork, and basically sell it out of an office space is what we're doing. We also offer, we do seasonal potting parties where people can bring pots in and we provide the materials to build the pots seasonally, you know, for Mother's Day, Christmas, stuff like that, Thanksgiving, things like that. So we're going to do that in the barn, which is next to there in that fifty-fifty barn. And during those events, we sell some seasonal flowers and things like that. That'll be for sale for the public because we ask, people always ask, do you have anything for sale that we could take with us or something? So that's what we're planning on doing there.
Okay.
So outside of the scope of adding more buildings or adding anything like that, we're basically like Mr. Phillips said, we're just moving on the property.
Okay.
It's going to be an office space retail design center if you want to hold this for it.
All right.
If you've got any questions other than that, I can.
No, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Do we have any proponents? These are people that are in support of this that want to come and speak?
My name is Lynn Mallory. I live next door and on the east side of the property, in fact, we share a driveway.
Okay.
I've known the Phillips, we've been there about thirty-six years. I was in the boat storage business there. And I don't have any problem with the business that I'm going to put there. You know, if it's going to be a nightclub or a used car lot, I might have some problem with what you're doing there. Brian's always been pretty straightforward. If he says, he says something, he can kind of count on that. That's what he wants to do. And I've met the people here. They seem to be, well, they've been in business for a while, so they know what they're doing. And I don't have any problem with it.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Bart Goodman. I live at forty-one oh seven East State Route seventy-three, directly across the street. I've known Brian for the twenty-plus years that I've been there and also his parents, who have conducted, you know, businesses that, you know, in that property and out. Actually, this type of business that Mr. Perkey seems to be, you know, wanting to get started there, has established. But what he wants to put in place seems like it'd be a great complement to ourselves and also some other neighboring businesses. So I certainly do not have any opposition to that. I think it'd bring a nice little add to the township and also the area out around there.
Thank you. Thank you. Is anybody else? Do we have any opponents? These are people that are not in favor of this change?
None.
Hearing none? All right. Do you have, well, you don't have any opponents, so I guess you don't really want to ask anybody any questions. All right.
Want to run through again?
Any other questions from the board about this?
I have none.
So for Stacy, what was about B two, what was it that was, that needed the B three versus B two? And I know you said there were a couple of things that were different. So what specifically was it about this use that?
So this use is a conditional use in the B two.
Gotcha.
And it's a site plan permitted use in the B three. So with the B two, there's a little wild card there for denial because, you know, a conditional use is not guaranteed, is not, nothing's guaranteed. But it's, there's more conditions that can be attached to it, you know. And it's a, you know, different board evaluating it when, you know, you're making the zoning decision. So you could think B two sounds good, but, you know, the BZA might think, you know.
Awesome, thank you.
To have some conditions to it.
And I know you've covered the, you know, the reason for conditional use, but it just helps to have an extra context on, you know, what was about that that. So, sorry, lawn and garden center is simply, is that the use?
It's called landscaping services and slash a garden center, kind of both.
Thank you. No other questions for me?
Okay. So I will make a motion to close the public hearing portion. Do I have a second?
And I will second.
For Mr. Patrick, enough?
Aye.
Okay. Do we want to discuss anything about how we think this should go, if we want to prove it? I'm looking at what our decision-making determinations consideration is one point three zero eight point five of the zoning code. And this is.
Does anybody need that?
Hi.
Hi, my book. I have my book.
So I see that it is suitable with the uses that are in the general area with all the other landscaping type, this is for garden near there and all the other type of landscaping type thing and small businesses that we have there. So it seems like a good, a good thing to be, area to make it a B three.
So basically, we're looking to make a motion, a motion to approve it as is?
Yes.
Application for it, correct?
Yeah, we're kind of discussing it first and then we can make a motion. Yeah. So, I mean, looking at what our zoning code allows, I think it fits with what we have.
I agree. There's B three across the road. You have B one, B two. That puts it more into B three in that area as well.
And I think like Stacy said, we don't have, I don't think we're going to get any strip clubs in there or car washes or truck stops or anything with that size of lot, so.
And I just want to point out too that, I mean, it's kind of site plan related, but if something else came and wanted to locate there later, if it isn't the same exact use that he has, it triggers a site plan again. So you'll have to come before you.
If the use, if the use changes, correct?
Even.
Then it triggers the site plan review. And, I mean, I don't mean to speak out of school here, but I mean, I am on.
Yeah, it's not more right than exactly.
So what we were, what we were thinking, you know, with going, approving or recommending the B three was that if it was going to, if the use would change, it was going to trigger a site plan review, which was going to, you know, put it back under scrutiny anyhow.
Right.
Which took the wild card out of what the BZA may or may not do.
Correct.
Thank you both for clarifying. I had that written down for the, I was going to hold it until the site plan review. So, but it's good to know.
And then, and then as far as in reference to recommending against what the RPC, we felt that, I mean, you know, granted, the comp plan has got a little age on it, but we felt that we knew our township better or more so than, than, not, not dancing on the RPC, but this is where we live, this is where we work, we feel we knew, we knew it better than what they might. And that's why we kind of went against their recommendation.
Well, I mean, we based our code off of Warner County, but we did change it to our specifications here locally.
True, yes.
So that's the other thing too, the reason why it's like, like you agree with you on that, correct?
Well, in this, you know, it's, it's no doubt that we don't have very many pockets of commercial activity within the township.
Right.
So, you know, they are skinny, but, but, you know, for, for what is identified on our comprehensive plan of twenty thirty, which used to seem a lot farther away, and now is just seven, four years away. But, you know, this is area identified for commercial activity and has been, fits with the character, so. Ready to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. I move to approve without modifications. Changing map amendment from B one and R one to B three for PID zero five zero seven one five one zero seven, which is forty-one thirty-eight East State Route seventy-three, a total of two point five six acres. The Wayne Township Zoning Commission motion or voted unanimously to approve. And there are no modifications.
I will second that motion.
Okay, a motion of Mr. Patrick, second of Ms. Coleman, to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, or older on, Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This is where the resolution survived after this is seventh day of March twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so now moving on to the site plan review for the same address. So Wayne Township Board of Trustees shall now, well, okay, I'm sorry, I need to close the, close the prior.
We are dead.
Meeting.
Yeah, we're very quick.
Okay, sorry, guys. So the Wayne Township Board of Trustees shall now come to order at seven forty-nine PM on Tuesday, March seventh, for a public hearing that was scheduled for seven thirty PM for a site plan application. Stacy Lowing, our zoning inspector, has a PowerPoint to share to explain the application and the reason for this hearing.
All right, well, kind of, there we go. It's a little odd. So this area for the site plan, of course, is going to be restricted to the two point five six acres at forty-one thirty-eight East State Route seventy-three. This is because this B three zoning allows landscaping services and garden centers through site plan approval. The applicant proposes.
It keeps blinking out. Is it blinking out of your guys' screen as well?
No.
No.
No?
Oh.
There it goes.
It's still on ours.
I don't know what's going on.
Go ahead.
Don't touch, nobody's talking.
Hold your breath and don't touch.
Awesome.
Nobody breathes.
Okay, otherwise, I'll just get the folder out like the old days and I'll show you my papers.
There you go.
Good job, guys.
All right.
I'm depending on electronics. Can you get back into?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Fear not, fear not. And we're not flickering or anything, so I think we're good.
Okay.
We're done.
I think this is where it was. All right, so the applicant proposes no new buildings. I did email some with O doc because sometimes a change of use will trigger a traffic analysis. But they said that the parking lots are remaining the same, so nothing would be needed. There's our area for them. So here's the site plan and I'll go back and talk about some of the conditions that I put under. Nothing, nothing major. So you'll just see that I'm showing, he's showing along the one border. That is a buffer yard B according to our zoning, which is the correct buffer yard I'm asking. Or recommending that we extend that along the rear as well. And then buffer yard A is required in our zoning code between business uses. And so I have a specific number of trees spelled out based on that distance in my recommendation. So I'll go back. And I apologize for my voice is not good tonight. All right, so if you would choose to approve the site plan, these are what I recommend. Do you want me to read these or? Do you want me to, or anybody?
I'd hate to say your voice. Don't, don't, don't worry about that.
I think the biggest thing is just on the buffer yard B has trees that are six feet high in type of planting. So it's a denser buffer yard A, and I'm showing them in. They don't have a minimum size and they're all set further apart at forty feet. I'm going to, I do want to talk about number three because that's a rezoning that occurred tonight. There's a thirty-day time period before a rezoning is valid. So this site plan is contingent upon waiting for that thirty-day timeframe to be up. So they'd not be able to
Act.
Yeah, act upon this until then. I mean, if you want to put in landscaping, that's at their own risk. I don't know if it's my risk, but you couldn't occupants, couldn't have any occupancy until the zoning is.
So they won't be able to start the business up really until the thirty-day period?
Because I have to, that's state law. It's not, it's not.
Send it, send it to the referendum.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's just so you guys understand. Do you understand the whole referendum?
Yeah, she explained that.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
And then basically, we're just talking signs if they want those, dumpster if he's going to have that. And then just send in our revised site plan to you within a few weeks with the the buffer yards shown if you want that as a condition.
Any questions for Stacy?
I think I'll go ahead first. So did the applicants find all of these?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did the applicants find all of these conditions? Did you share all of them with them?
I did at the lab, meaning that there was going to be some more landscaping on there. But there's something I'll say, I'm going to say this. But, you know, I guess I, thank you anyways.
Any other questions for Stacy? We have to do the. Do you have any questions for Stacy?
No, I think I'm good right now.
And the parking needs are standard. So, I mean, I know that the pavement is already there, but if I do the calculations for how many parking spaces, it's really about exactly what they're supposed to have. So that works out well. And he's going to paint the lines and everything to make it look like the parking lot.
Okay, so once again, just like the previous one, everyone has the right to speak in either support or opposition or ask questions. We ask that you state your name and address again, and we set to five-minute limit. We hear from the applicants first.
I'm good. Unless you have another question for me, I'm.
Okay.
Yeah, I've pretty much said all I have to say.
You have anything you want to say about the site plan?
No, I can just answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions.
That's awesome.
Okay. Okay.
Just go do your landscaping.
Do you plan to have any outdoor storage of equipment or anything, any sorts of, okay, all right. And then with the tree planting, I wasn't sure where the leach field or septic was for this?
It, it's, if you kind of see on that drawing, do you want to show them broader? I can tell you, yeah, you see where the office, where it says office building? That, that, that building has a septic, the bar has no restroom in it.
Okay.
The office building has the restroom facilities in it. There is a leach field that's behind that, so there's like a buffer between the, the septic in the back of the building. My dad built it that way, that way, if he ever wanted to add on to that building, he could. So there's a small buffer, then the septic starts, and then the leach field goes straight out behind the office building.
Okay.
So, so that land's pretty dead anyway with the leach field there, you can't, you know what I mean, it's, you know, so, but it, it goes, it just shoots right back and it kind of, you know, you know how a leach field is, so. But yeah, that's where it's at, it's not behind the barn area.
Okay.
It's all in the back behind the office building.
Okay. Do you see any issue with planting the trees with the barn there, I don't know how much role...
Next, next to the, to the barn where the green line is, I don't, Mr. Mallory's my neighbor. I'd have to, you know, I'd want to talk it over with my neighbor because he does boat storage there, and I know he, he doesn't want leaves, so, you know, we'd have to figure out, you know, what kind of trees we're talking about. I wouldn't want to put anything that would shed a leaf because that would just be a disaster over there, to be real honest. His driveway runs right along that, right along that green line. He's got barns there and then, you know, they go back and actually, right there at the, if you see the barn, the back edge of the right side of the barn there, if you go about 10 to 20, maybe 30 feet, he's got boats that sit there. So I wouldn't want to put, you know, he's got tree, there's like behind his property where I'm going to extend it, where I showed you, that's all wooded lot already. So it's already buffered right there. I just don't know, I mean, I, I, I don't have a problem with planting things, but I would definitely want to consult with my neighbor before I do anything like that because, because of his business, and I wouldn't want leaves because, you know, leaves, I already got enough leaves on my property.
Sure.
I, I wouldn't want leaves just going all over his property and then he'd have to deal with all that cleanup, it sucks.
So Stacy, now, the, the buffer yard A would be, that, that would not have a height mandate, right? That could be anything in the 40 feet apart? So, 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 I mean, you, you could do evergreens that are 40 feet apart?
Yeah, and I think we, we, Mr. Perky already talked about.
Sorry, my computer just turned off.
I thought we agreed not to mess with this delegate's thing.
You can see actually like what I was telling you, see that, you can see the boat, there's actually a boat sitting there right on, see if the corner is right properly?
Yeah.
So I, you know, I wouldn't have a problem, you know, if, if that's what it takes to, to plant some stuff there, but I definitely wouldn't want...
But there is like a...
Leaf trees there because that would like make a, just, it would make a total mess there for, for my neighbor and really for myself.
Seems about 25 feet in there.
But if you plant a tree, you're going to put it right in the middle, so you're talking 12 feet on both sides, and then you're looking at a tree that's going to grow. Depends what type, what type of tree you put in there, if you put a fast, it doesn't really fast growing, but you put like a maple or an oak or something like that, still want to grow a pretty tall line. So you're going to be well past 12 feet on each side.
Yeah, and I don't want that going into my gutters or his gutters.
And then you're causing an issue for the neighbors, he's got trimmers trees, you got to get it back to the property line and...
I would want to do something evergreen-like, you know what I'm saying? Mr. Perky knows the name of the, we've already talked about this, or, you know, it'd be hard to put some evergreen in it. Yeah, you know, it grows, it's big, it's, I put some in my old house in my backyard, but leaves would be a huge problem right there. And I think Mr. Mallory would agree.
You could even...
I mean, so...
Okay. Thanks. I don't have, do you guys have any more questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I had, I had one question.
Okay.
Sorry. Lighting, are you adding additional lighting to the, to the property?
We weren't, we weren't planning on it, there is some light on the office building and there's a large light on the front of the Morton barn.
Yes.
There is lighting on all three sides of the office now.
But you're not adding additional lighting or anything like that right now, because, okay, just wanted to check.
It's more like an apartment area, nothing that.
Okay, appreciate that, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any proponents of this site plan that want to come and discuss anything? Okay. Do we have any opponents that want to say anything about the site plan? All right. Do we have any other further questions on the board?
I have none.
All right, at 8:05, then we're closing the public portion of the hearing, so we can discuss this.
I make a motion to close the public hearing at 8:06?
All right, I will second that.
All those favorites, you're pausing, huh?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Honestly, I'm not as much in favor of the buffer zone A on the east side. Due to the reasons stated with the, it just, the proximity to the neighbor and with the neighbor necessarily probably doesn't want it either. I mean, what are we, what are we buffering, you guys already know what you have.
Absolutely.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I can't say this is something to protect, you know, future developments or anything else because, I mean, this, this property's already developed and clearly there's, you know, some level of commercial activity that's happening, so I, you know, I, I appreciate the points that were raised and...
I mean, I'm always friendly, if my neighbors ever want to, you know, I would definitely do something like if Mr. Mallory said, look, can you plant some? I would be like, sure.
And if everybody was like you, we wouldn't need zoning law.
Exactly. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm old school, I try to get along with my neighbors, man, you know, it's their neighbors, so, you know.
We demand it.
We like to help each other out as much as possible, that's what it's all about, so.
This has been a great zoning, uh, experience.
What about buffer zone B, the one to the north side of the property, how do you guys feel about that?
I didn't really understand, I, I got the green line between the properties, I'm not really sure what Ms. Stacy was talking about, about the other one, I'm not sure.
So, there was a, was your last time that asked for some buffering, the guy that, he owns the property?
Are we talking about the line in the back of the property or the line?
Yes, the tree line, the garden, and then, you were speaking at the last meeting about adding some more, just as...
Yeah, I mean, we, we could absolutely do that, but I still, again, I still, it's so close to Mr. Mallory's property with leaves. Leaves are going to cause an issue, do we get enough leaves from that wooded, that wooded lot that's sitting there now? So, but if, if...
You could do evergreen?
Yeah, the, what were they called, one of those things?
Arbividae.
Arbividae, yeah, so, you know, we could plant a row of them right there if need be, and that would, that would be a problem, so.
You're the, Mr. Phillips, your house is the west, right?
Yes, yes, I, yes, yes. I own the, own the four acres that's to the west of it, right next door.
I mean, you're going to survey that background.
Eventually, yes, that's what I'd like to do.
So Stacy, who is asking for the screen?
I agree with him on that one, because I cut the trees down, so I wouldn't have to plenty of others.
Which one's that?
He's on the east side.
Wait, she is on the east side, he's on...
Right, right. There, you see that, you see that, yeah, you see that wooded area there?
Commercial property, front lawn, residential.
The, the picture's kind of, um... I can't think of the word I'm trying to say, like, it looks like there's trees there on the other side of that line, but there's not. That's actually a shadow from the trees, yes, that are on those lots now. So...
So all those are on...
Yeah, so like, that, his whole back half of the property is basically all woods.
All trees, right.
Yeah, and they don't ever use it, there's a, if you can see it, there's like an old, real old barn, it was there before my family moved in, it's still there.
Yeah, it's still down.
Yeah, and it's still, it's outfalling over, so, but yeah, it's in there, you can't really see it too well, especially in the, when the trees grow green. But, I mean, if he wanted more buffering, I don't think he would need, but if he did, I, I'm not, you know, against doing something like that. I don't think Mr. Perky is either. Yeah.
The new line that we just, the B three line?
It stops right there, yes, and that, that's basically his fence line that I told you, there's an old rip and a fence right there.
Okay.
And like, you can't really even walk through there, if you can see like, there's a, a green spot in the middle there. If you go back maybe 50 yards to the right, there's like an open spot there, and then if you go another 50 yards, you see his house up front. So that, that's that lot, and he's got it fenced off too, so, but no one ever uses the back half of that lot at all. But, I mean, if he wanted more buffering, I mean, it's not a problem, I mean, we could plant some arboridus there and, and it would be fine, so. I mean, that's not something that's out and around, we needed to do that.
I respect the residents certainly, but I just don't see how...
I, I know.
It's pretty well screened already.
It looks pretty well screened.
It's real screened.
Well, I mean, this dilapidated barn that's here, I mean, maybe you want to screen against that.
It's been there so long, I mean...
It's collapsed.
It's almost collapsed.
You can't even walk back there.
Yeah.
I, I mean, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm a, I'm a proponent, it's your property, you do what you want, I mean, it is an eyesore, I'm not going to lie, but in the, in the, in the, the summer and fall, you can't even see it, it's so covered back in there. So I'm not that type of neighbor, I mean, it's been like that, like I said, for over 48 years, so, you know, I just, the only thing I'd hate to see is a little kid getting it.
Who's there 36 years ago with the barn that falls down?
I respect you. So Stacy, did you sue up to your head on the amendment? Yeah, Stacy's property now, you know, you're filling out a form, and now you can hug them all, and they're close, almost all.
Is there any sort of buffering?
But so, your potential for that, you can't even... To me, it just keeps that junk. I understand, I understand the reason. If there was more arsine, something like that, I would suggest that, like you're saying, is what they have right here is a way that it comes across a way to avoid it, it's a silent. Let, let them have flexibility to be, if they want to put it there, especially if they can do that, I think right now, just, to me, I would let them choose.
So, you have nothing left to, so we have nothing left to talk about?
There's going to be more snakes in there than... If you come, come right at my driveway, give me a very, yeah, right there.
Never pay attention.
And this fence?
Yes.
I'm going to cross the highway.
Thank you.
East side, but on Brian's side, so. That guy was afraid he was going to put a big pile of mulch or something, so he can't use that property. Yeah, hopefully, that'd be a buffer that's full in.
Sorry.
Well, that's all right, we're, we're all listening.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve resolution 2023-18 with modifications of removing section one, which is buffer yard B, and removing section two, which is buffer yard A, but leaving three, which is contingent upon the rezoning, which we did, and there's a 30-day wait period. Any sign has to be approved by the zoning inspector and a sign permit must be obtained prior to placement. If you're going to put a dumpster in, it will be screened off as described in our zoning code and shown on the site plan and a revised site plan. Showing the buffer yards, which I won't have, and the dumpster article shall be submitted to the zoning inspector within two weeks. Second on that motion?
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion for Ms. Colvin, second, Mr. Patrick, to adopt resolution 2023-18 for what's been spoken, call roll drawn. Mr. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
This resolution survived adoption of this is 7th day of March, 2023.
All right. Now we will go back to our regularly scheduled meeting, which I think we have nothing, we got to, yeah, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at 8:15 PM.
I second.
And Mr. Oliver's favorite?
Aye.
Aye.